Okay. Let's get started. Today is...oh, I just signed all of the papers June 22nd. And today is June 27th.
Okay.
All day today, I've signed papers June 22nd, actually. So, let's call to order, and we've done executive session approval of minutes of May 23rd.
Make a motion?
Second.
Thank you. I do actually have a question, Annie. When in the record of votes, several times it just talks about who made the motion, not who seconded in the status of the vote. Is that... So, I wonder if that's correct protocol?
No, it's not.
Okay, I think it's a couple of times.
So, I only see...I just want to make sure, I only see one. Additional school choice slots, Fesah Houdin, most increased.
If I find...I'll look.
So, I'll adjust.
Can we approve as needed? And then if I find others?
Additional school choice slots, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. Can we move the public comment period forward since Joanne just walked in? How's that for service?
And also...
Service with a smile by the school committee.
And also, HEA will not be on our agenda this evening.
The moratorium. Is that it?
That's it.
Hi, Joanne.
Hi.
Welcome.
Anne Patrick.
Anne Patrick, hi Patrick.
Do you want me to...I wanted to let all of you know Linda came and met with us. I don't know how far you want me to back up our...
Did we talk about it at the last meeting?
No, I don't think we did at the meetings.
Oh, I talked to Paul, I talked to Capital Planning Committee.
Right, so maybe I'll just explain the whole story for the interest of those who listen. The library is now considering whether building on the space between the Russell Street School and Hopkins, that empty area, is an option for a new library. We contacted Linda and Annie and asked them to come to our last meeting where we talked about some pros and cons. We sent our architects to examine that area. We've been told it was in floodplain and we needed to know, could we actually build in that area? We just wanted to let all of you know that our architect is coming back to our planning and design meeting tonight. I have not seen anything from him. I expect to see something this evening. And he has said it will be possible to build there. And so, I emailed Linda and wanted all of you to know that this...maybe, we're not saying we're going to build there, but we'd like to kind of work with the school committee. We'd like to know if there could be someone that's appointed to work with us to discuss things like parking, any, you know, things, issues that might come up for the schools if we decide to go this route. We're still not sure this is the route we're going, but we wanted to keep you all updated and just get any feedback or answer any questions.
So, Capital Planning Committee met. We talked about it, and then I went to the library meeting. And in a nutshell, what the Capital Planning Committee said was, we are fine with that being explored. Our biggest concern would be parking and especially the loss of overflow parking during big Hopkins events, and that we would need to work with you to make sure that's going to work out. And that what we like about the idea is that it's a nice community center between Hopkins and if the library moved there and if the field project moves forward, that part's very nice. And for the most part, I think parking would be our biggest concern back and forth.
And flow, and we're concerned about flow through.
We had a lot of talk about that, that we don't love either entrance or exit to Hopkins now, and then having another use. We should all look at circulation.
So, you know, we're kind of pushing it back to the engineers and the architects saying, what can you do about this? We, you know, we don't know either, but we wanted to make sure we put it in the hands of professionals who might know and might have a solution. So, we don't know if we're going to get to a solution, if it's going to be an option, but we want all of you to be included as we kind of go through the thought process.
Can you talk a bit about your vision for the library? So, what kind of building, what use would we find there?
So, the new library will be, I think it's about 10,500 square feet, maybe closer to 11.
Yeah, it was 11,500. So, it's all a one, a single-story building, which will be...we'll be able to supervise essentially the same amount of staffing that we have now. It'll include a separated children's room, separated young adult space. It will have a after-hours meeting room that will accommodate probably 75 people that can be used, you know, can be locked or can be opened up by people who get the key, come and use it after the library is closed. Building remains secure. What else is...what other features?
I'm sorry, did you say single-story?
Yes, single-story.
Single-story, yeah.
And I have been assured by the architect today that that is what they looked at even in this lot, is a single-story building. It's just cheaper to maintain because of staffing reasons. You know, libraries are community centers. Our library that we vision will be a community center, will be handicap accessible, unlike the library we have now. And, you know, we're too crowded. We don't really have room. We throw away books on a regular basis because there's not one inch of space in our library. It's 100 years old. So, this would be an opportunity for us to kind of continue. We right now host great after-school programming for your high school and have a good number of students come and right after school and hang around in the library. We have like a cafe space and programming for them, as well as programming for younger children and adults. But we have been kind of attracting the Hopkins students after school, which has kind of been a nice match. So, it could be that we find ways to work together if we're here.
Sounds intriguing. I'm on the capital campaign committee, and I'd love to be involved. It sounds like you want somebody to be a candidate.
So, what...I was wondering if you and I could kind of split it since you sometimes are out of town.
So, we expect that this summer...so, we have a very small window, right? Because we have to go back to the town meeting in October with a plan. So, we have a very short window because this is our second time. The grant is due in January, so since we failed at the last meeting, we have one more opportunity to get the town to pass the library in October. And that would be just to apply for the grant, no money. And in order to apply for the grant, we would need approval from the town in October. So, we expect some questions for you through the summer that would need some answering. We expect we might be meeting every two weeks. We don't know how often we need you, but we want you to feel included. Like, we don't want you to feel like we're just doing this and you're there and we're there.
So, can we split it and then you and I will communicate back and forth?
So, we'll just email both of you when we're having, when we have information and then you can just decide.
Perfect. And we'll have regular school committee updates.
And is there anything you want me to take back to planning and design tonight besides kind of the parking and the traffic flow? Anything else we could tell our architects of any concerns or interests or anything? One thing we are...I was told is a concern is the bell, disruption of the bell. So, we have told our architects that, and we're...we may be talking about ways to incorporate kind of the bell and the monument to the original school in the new library if that works out.
I think parking and circulation are our biggest issues and...
And to be honest, there are two.
I know.
We don't...we don't want to put the library somewhere where patrons can't get to it either.
Right.
Just curious, building style, obviously, you got a mix of whatever year this is, 60s?
Well, you know, I have an answer for you for our old building because our old building was designed...the building we were going to build next to the library was designed kind of to go with the library. So, I don't know what the architect's coming back with tonight.
How to match Hopkins seems quite a challenge.
Do they want to try?
Maybe they'll kind of go for more of the Russell School book.
Yeah.
I don't...I've seen nothing. I just got a call today said that the civil engineer said it could be done, that the grade has to be raised, but it's not, you know, cost prohibitive. That was the big thing. It was in the floodplain, and that was the big concern originally. That's why we didn't consider it the first time around.
Great.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Hope tonight's meeting goes well.
Thank you.
So, they're in the floodplain?
Yes, we are.
Lower than that.
I'm not sure which year near floodplain we're at.
Oh, before, you know what? While we're still on camera, I remembered the other concern is that, you know, we're losing a softball field if this happens. And so, we acknowledge that we'd have to...the fields project has to go, so we don't lose the softball field.
Right, and we talked about that, that that would come through CPA and we would kind of do both.
Yep, sorry, Richard. Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Annie. We now move to presentation and discussion items with your update next.
So, you have in your packet your district strategy document. Just a reminder, I know that next month, July, is scheduled for my evaluation, which happens in open session publicly. I've also included...so, last month, you received an Excel spreadsheet with the data, specific quantitative data on each one of the goals. Some of those were met last spring, so it has a date that it was met. If it's green, it was met. If it's yellow, it's progress, but didn't hit the target. There's also additional data in the summary on each goal. That's some more...a summary more of activities, not of the quantitative data you received last month, of some of the work that we've been doing in each one of the goals. And lastly, as part of this, in your packet, you received our access proficiency levels, which is a bar graph. So, at the beginning of the year, Celine Desadi, the ESL teacher, English as a Second Language teacher, and I did a presentation of the program and some of the outcomes for our students. So, now, we're looking at comparing where we have data for three years, otherwise for two years. You see student F there is new to us this year. I should have dropped. There's no comparison for student F. But just another data point for you around our focus in that district strategy on ensuring that all learners demonstrate growth, that we meet the diverse learning needs, and certainly our English learners represent students with diverse learning needs. And I'm very pleased with the growth that students are exhibiting in our ESL program.
Awesome. So, the coming month, we all remember the process for the superintendent evaluation is everyone does it individually, submits it to me, and then I do a combined that we do publicly at the July meeting, hopefully, which means we need to get on that. Everyone needs to get on that. And Annie, your door is open if school committee members have questions and want to talk to you about anything? Okay. The form itself, do I have that? Can you send us that? That'd be smiffy. And is that all you have for your update?
Yep.
So, we are on to the athletic program evaluation, which we received in advance. Who's giving us that presentation? Are you?
I am just going to identify some of the parts of the athletic program evaluation, which is available in the school committee, in the superintendent's office, if the public would like to view it. I believe it's available on our website right now, but I'll verify that that's the case on the school department website. I just, I don't want to walk through every single piece of this. Again, it's available for viewing. I wanted to let the school committee members know that there are, under some standards, the areas for improvement are things that are already underway or we've started to tackle. And I would say generally speaking, the number one thing that we'd like to do in the fall before we prioritize which pieces we want to tackle first would be at the very end of the report, there's a recommendation to create kind of an advisory council around athletics. So, we would create that council, which would involve inviting parents to participate in that, and then...
That's not the recommendation.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
I think we need to be very clear about what the recommendation is for the makeup of that committee.
Let's go to that.
It very specifically says not directly involved in the athletic program is either coach, athlete, or parent.
Yep.
Oh, thank you very much.
And that is, in my opinion, critical.
That is critical, yes. And we'll make that more challenging to put together, frankly.
Yes.
Not directly involved?
Yep.
Thank you very much. My focus will be getting the council together and letting the council decide what's most important to tackle first, unless the school committee has really strong feelings about some issues that they would like to see addressed.
Well, I do have some, I have some questions about the study, and then... The beginning of the report says that the amount we spend is 2.1% of our total budget on athletics. Any idea, Chris, whether that's high, low, average?
I suppose it really depends on what they're including with that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know, are they including athletic transportation?
Everything under the line. So, when they went, they had a copy of the budget. That was one of the documents that they asked for in advance. So, everything associated with athletics, coaches, anything under that other school services that was tagged as athletics, training, coaches, athletic transportation, yeah.
But that doesn't include the booster contribution.
No.
No, 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 no. It's only... They were only looking at...the document they used to arrive at that figure was a copy of the FY16 budget.
Yeah, okay, so, so there's athletic revolving expenses as well that would not be included in there.
Yeah, so there's more spent than that.
And booster donations obviously are...
Right, right, right.
I think what they were trying to say, which is good to clarify to people, that if they're looking at the operating budget and they extrapolate expenses within the operating budget that are there, that are spent on athletics, but they weren't, I don't think they were talking, total expenditure is all funds on athletics. They were looking only at the FY16 budget document.
Yeah, I mean, not having it right in front of me, but it sounds ballpark certain, so it could be exactly right, yeah.
The other thing that really struck me when I read through the report is that I think there are two competing paradigms about the athletic programs at Hopkins. And one is that, and I remember being told this multiple times when I first moved to town, we have a nice, small school, everybody gets to participate, everybody eventually makes varsity. That's not true, and that's not what this recommends.
Yeah.
But I think that that does contribute to tensions around it because this recommends competitive sports where, you know, you only play if you can attain a certain level of competence. And I think that that is something that could be better communicated to the community because I think that does cause parents problems and kids too. They have an expectation, it's a small school, I'll be able to play, and that just doesn't always come out.
Right, and yes, so, for those people that haven't read the report, the report does talk about our policy, and we do have kind of a cumbersome policy that addresses that very thing. And I think we are pretty much the only school district that has that policy, in part because we're such a small school district. But it, my memory of what it says is that seventh graders, we believe, are too young to play varsity.
Right.
And eighth graders can play varsity only if there's no cuts of seniors in the process of that. This study recommends that's a cumbersome policy and should be revisited. And I guess my feeling when I read the report was if we had the council formed and if the council was well-functioning and we were doing a good job of working with our coaches to talk about what our mission is and the mission of sports in balance with the educational goals of our school system, and that we don't need that policy if we are adhering to the overall mission of why do we have sports in Hopkins? Do you agree?
I agree with you. I'm not sure that's what the report says.
Really? I think the report says change the policy.
Oh, it definitely says change the policy, but I think it comes out very strongly as, you know, the goal of sports is to win.
Do you?
Yes, I do. I was really struck by that.
Oh, I'm going to have to read it again.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying that there are these two competing ideas about what sports at Hopkins is supposed to be about as a small, you know, as a small school.
So, it seems like that the purpose of the sport changes with grade and season, and if you're in a tournament, if you're not in a tournament. So, there are times I've seen it fluctuate, reasonably so. And so, you're saying that we just need to make it clear?
Right.
If we have a certain standard, does everybody know? I haven't gotten all the way through the report, so you're saying that there's, we have a standard in the report saying maybe we should get rid of that?
We have a policy.
We have a policy about middle school participation on the varsity level.
Right.
So, there's that conflict between is sports about competition or participation? And there's belief in the community that the focus should be on maximum participation, where you're saying in the community, there's also a split.
I think there's a split, yes. I think there's a split.
I think that's why we wanted to do this study.
We have so much trouble. No, I think there is a split. I think that this comes down very strongly in favor of competition. But I think you'll find people in town who are still saying, oh, it's great, it's so small, everybody gets to participate, everybody gets a varsity level. That may, does not seem to be occurring now, I would say. And so, it may be that we need to communicate that maybe that's not how athletics works at Hopkins.
And Linda, you're saying that that really recommendation should probably come from a council?
What recommendation?
To that the middle school.
About where the emphasis should be.
Oh, where the emphasis should be.
Oh, no. I think that, I think that still comes from the school committee. What I was saying was, I think for me, I'm not on the policy subcommittee anymore, but that I would be more inclined to think about changing the policy if we, as a school committee, were convinced that the council was formed and well-functioning and that the result of that was that we had a clear mission, and that clear mission was being communicated and practiced by our coaches and our players, which I think the council has, there's more opportunity for that to occur if there's a group of people that are dedicated to making sure that our mission is being met and adhered to. So, I don't know that, I think that we, I think I would recommend that before the school committee changes the policy, that we read the report more carefully, we think about the council, we meet with the council, et cetera. And I wouldn't change the policy right now.
No, not basically, just on this.
Yeah. So, maybe what we want to do, maybe we want to talk about this again next month after we've had, I would like to read it again to see if I get the sense that you got.
Yeah.
And we don't have Heather and Humira here.
I'll be out next month, I think.
Darn. All right, unless we want to change the date, how...
What date is it?
It's the fourth Monday.
Unless we push it into August, I will be in Europe for three weeks.
All right, well, we can continue to talk. But I do think, let's talk more about it because this, because I think the policy was created during a time of controversy, and maybe we're not in that time, but we could enter again.
And thank you for calling my attention too. I didn't read that, not in there about who's on the council and how that...
And I do think that that's really important, that...
It makes sense.
For the, for a sense of objectivity, it just cannot be a parent.
You're not a current parent, is what it's essentially saying.
Yes, right, right, right.
So, but it doesn't mention our policy though.
It does in here, yeah.
Well, the first page has, the very first page has, oh, it does, it talks about the policy in the summary at the end. At the very, the beginning are the three mission statements, and at the very end in the summary section, it talks about that policy.
So, it'd be good to share that.
Yes, I think we should pull, I think we should, what would be great is if we could have all of the policies as well as the athletic handbook and that we look, do a comprehensive look at the whole thing.
So, I just want to be clear in terms of school committee. You want in a school committee packet, this report, all the policies and the handbook? Or is that...
Yeah, whatever is available, that's applicable.
And for, but it would be nice if we were all here. So, let's see if that occurs in July or August based on people's schedule. Which, if it's not until August, that may mean that the council's not being up and running by September, but I'd rather do it well than... All right, are we good on that?
Yeah.
Ooh, we're on the five-year budget scenarios.
That was a handout in front of you, looks like.
It's the colors that made you say we didn't, wasn't it?
It's the small font.
Yes. So, we have three different versions, basically showing the revenues and expenses. The top version is basically a level service budget using school choice as the balancer to kind of offset any shortfalls that we may have...
Level services from FY17, not including the extra $75,000.
Actually, level...
Oh, level services, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Basically, what it did is it takes the average change over the past four years and applied that going forward, with the exception of the FY17 budget is already approved, so that's just as it is now. And it just shows, you know, if we also get the same average increase in the local contribution that we've gotten, this is what we're going to have to do for school choice money. You can see that, obviously, this year we have an increased amount, or not this year, but in FY17. And then going forward, it applies the, that's kind of the balancer, so it applies whatever we need. And it's not a really bad scenario.
Why is transportation, what happened to transportation that it's 11.58%?
We were under a five-year contract.
Oh, right.
That contract ended. And, you know, the thing about transportation contracts is that you, you get it for basically three years with two years of renewals, you know, that you can opt in at. Then, when you get the new budget, our new contract, they're basically building in five years' worth of non-increases that they saw, you know, and then so that's why you saw a big jump in the transportation costs.
How is that middle section not too bad? I'm looking at fiscal year 18, 19.
I'm looking at the top section.
Oh, the top section?
Level service budget.
Level services is, it's looking, so it, basically, we're projecting a $200,000 to $300,000 increase per year to maintain existing level of services.
That's correct, yeah.
And so, you're looking at the past at a 4% annual increase from the town contribution to continue into the future?
That's correct. And so, the school choice money, as you can see, it's kind of decreasing as we go along, but it's not terribly higher than what we've been using, you know, the roughly $520,000 a year we've been using, so...
Why is it going down, Chris?
It's basically, that's just where, again, it's the balancer, so we're not applying a percentage to... not applying a percentage to it or something.
I see.
He's assuming a core percent increase in local funding.
Right.
And that with the grant revenues increasing two percent a year, right, two and a quarter?
Yes.
So that's been consistent? We've been getting six and a quarter percent increase with those two funds?
Well, it hasn't been consistent. And of course, the thing about grants is
Yeah.
It's not all used basically to offset expenses to the budget. Some of it is, it has to, you know, increase the programs that we offer. And so we can't just say, oh, we got a grant, we're going to pay for this person's salary out of it, you know. So it doesn't necessarily fully take a bite out of the financial needs of the district.
So is this, this is to be submitted to the town?
I don't know. No, well, we are.
Is there a request?
We told them we were doing it and that we would come back to the tri board meeting with something, so.
And this bad tuition jumped two hundred thousand from sixteen to seventeen?
Yes.
Because?
Placement.
Out of district.
Oh, oh, did that's what, out of district, okay.
Yes.
So going, going to the second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go at your pace certainly.
Okay. Are we good with the first box? So first box, level services. We're seeing budget increases of two to three hundred thousand dollars a year and assuming the town keeps pace with us.
To the two and four percent a year.
To the two and four percent a year.
The second box is if the local funds remain the same dollar amount for the next five years, what will happen, what will school choice have to be to offset that? And you can see, well, it's not a happy scenario, obviously.
It's an impossible one.
It, you're right, it is impossible. Because first of all, we're not making one point six million dollars in school choice money. So.
What are we making now?
Um, about five forty-ish, I'd say.
So my, my quick math would be that we could sustain that in FY eighteen and we'd be in trouble starting in nineteen. Right? Because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be bringing in enough and have enough of a balance.
Right.
So nineteen becomes the problem year for us.
That's correct. Again, that's assuming that the town gives no more money than what they gave this year. Or, or, I'm sorry, next year.
So, so where did you get the four point oh four increase for the town?
Uh, if I just take the average increase year to year.
From twelve to sixteen.
Uh, yeah, but I actually did twelve to thirteen, thirteen to fourteen, fourteen to fifteen, and fifteen to sixteen, and divided the total by four. And, and that's where it came out to four point oh four.
Um, how long are you, how long are you with us? Like, two more days?
No, I'm, I'm working Saturday, the second, and then Saturday, the ninth, and then.
For, for this middle, maybe, um, well, let's keep going. Let's keep going to the, to the next rectangle and then I have a question, I think.
All right. And the next one is basically if we kept the school choice spending down to the five hundred and twenty thousand. Again, FY seventeen is the kind of unusual circumstance that we bumped it up temporarily. But if we brought it back down to the five hundred and twenty thousand per year, that's what we'd have to see for the local contribution.
Which is not four percent, four percent, is it?
No, no, it's not.
It's going up, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not, that's not correct.
In all of these though, this, in every case, this is level services. We're doing nothing to enhance services.
That's correct.
Right, but you're coming for increased costs, salaries.
Right.
So I guess one question I have for you, Chris, is, is going back to the second box, it would be nice to know, because we know we're not gonna have enough school choice funds to, to do this one. And we probably can assume the town's not going to do it either. So where we are left is, we either need to find another source of revenue, the town could do it if there was another source of revenue, or we're beginning to cut, and the cuts are starting in nineteen, we think.
Yeah.
Is there any way to project what, what you think will hap, when we have a problem? And by how much each year? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Not entirely.
Well, what's our, what will our balance be, what will our balance be as, of school choice when we start FY seventeen?
Be about five hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know the June spend increment yet, so that may go up.
And we assume we bring in about five hundred thousand, correct?
I would assume slightly higher than that, yeah.
Five hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I, I'd give it about that.
So in FY eighteen, if we're bringing in five hundred and fifty and we are cutting into our balance.
It'd take a few years for that to be eaten up. If we're starting with five fifty, we're gonna get another five fifty.
But I think it's, but I think it's nineteen. I think in nineteen, we're going, we would be going into nineteen with five hundred and fifty plus two hundreds. We would be going into nineteen with about seven or eight hundred thousand, meaning we would be half, we would have half.
You're in the middle, middle.
I'm in the middle box, right? We would have half the amount of school choices we would need if conditions stayed as they are.
Yeah, unfortunately, and that's, that's the problem really with when you're looking out multiple years, is you just don't know. There are so many variables involved.
I know.
You know, that, you know, we don't know that the school choice situation will remain the same. You know, it could, could get better. We're hoping it wouldn't get worse, but in which case, you would see more money coming in.
But even if it gets better, it's not gonna get two to three hundred thousand dollars a year.
That would be highly doubtful.
Right. So it'll get incrementally better. So what I'm looking at is from the FY sixteen to seventeen town contribution, it's not four percent. It's closer to three percent. So I'm just wondering if that's the future assumption, that we're gonna maintain a lower or even declining town contribution?
The local contribution in, in FY seventeen increase was lower than we've seen in prior years, yeah. Percentage wise.
Percentage, yeah. So I get, I hear what you're getting at, Lynda. Even if we think, if nineteen's when we're out of school choice money essentially, or fully committed on all of those dollars, then that means twenty, FY twenty, we're.
We're in deep trouble.
So you wanna plan.
Would it, would it do any better if I added another row, like right underneath school choice used with school choice balance running forward?
If you asked.
And that way you could see, oh, we're using this much and our balance is that. That might make it easier. All right, I can do that.
Can, can I go, and go back up to, going back up to the first rectangle?
Mm-hmm.
How is that one in balance?
Again, the school choice money is what we use to balance it, but we were seeing the increase in the local contribution, unlike scenario number two.
A four percent increase.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So if the town could hold, so, oh, right, I even said that. So.
The problem with that is that we've been told that we are not a priority.
Right.
For the next couple of years.
Well, it's a very compelling metric though to say, hey, look, we need to continue a four percent increase in contribution to maintain a stable budget, given our inflation and predicted school choice budget.
So, all right, so what do we want to, I think at the very least, what we can say to the town is we anticipate, based on using the last one, two, three, four, five years as our history, looking forward five years, we anticipate keeping a level services budget of, anticipate increases of two to three hundred thousand dollars per year. And that, that's.
That's nothing extra. That's not necessarily taking care of your technology replacement. That's not, that's.
Right.
That's just meeting your contractual obligations.
But that is perhaps manageable if the town maintains at least a four percent increase every year and not, doesn't stay at FY seventeen levels. If they stay at FY seventeen levels, we are in trouble, serious trouble, starting about halfway through fiscal year nineteen and beyond.
Yes.
Which we'd wanna plan for, at least in eighteen.
Right.
It's all right, it would mean reductions.
Yeah. So if Chris adds a, here's what's happening to the balance column, do we, that will help.
That's a lot to the report.
Um, do we need any, do we want anything else? And would we, are we comfortable with bringing this to tri board? Or do we want to see any other changes?
Well, I think this would be helpful to bring to tri board, to just have some discussion and find out where their, their approach is, is likely to be.
So Chris, I think in this case, this, in, at least in this square, this stated four point oh four isn't four point oh four.
That is true, yes.
So I think that's an important.
Well, actually, it's the actual, so it is going past. Going forward would be a zero percent.
Right, yeah. So I guess it's FY seven, right, 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 right.
Right, so eighteen going on.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And this one, so the four point four, four point oh four is a moment in time or an average in time. And the, the differences here is what happens to the town contribution. Somehow we need to reflect that. Do you feel like that's being reflected here? Or we could put it in the title?
Well, level local funds.
Level local funds.
Is that middle?
Level service.
Level school choice. So it's all level service, but.
So really, the first one is town maintains a four percent increase every year, school choice is balancing. That's number one. Number two, town doesn't increase at all and stays at FY seventeen levels.
Right, school choice balances again.
And number three is the town is.
The balancer.
Is the balancer.
Yes, unlikely.
Well, it is, so it is assuming in number one, level service. It is assuming in scenario two, level funding. The assumption in level three is an annual increase, average annual increase in town contribution of four point oh four percent. Is that correct? You want that going forward in level three?
Um, that's, that's the top one, yeah.
So the bottom one.
The bottom one is.
What we'd actually need from the town to maintain level services.
So we just have to figure out what the, what the annual percentage increase.
I can put the same formula here at the end and say, you know, projected need.
Right. Because I think, I think that's, so it is in fact, the first one is level service. The second one is level funded, leveled by local funds, exactly what you said.
Right, yes, yeah.
It doesn't change. And then the last one is assumes X percentage increase annually for the next blank fiscal years from town contribution.
Okay, yes, so I can add the school choice balance, I can add the formulas at the end to show.
What we could also do, Chris, is put a line right here.
Yeah.
Because like, this is showing history. You know what I mean?
Sure, yeah.
This is, the percentages we apply to start our case is based on history. Now, this is the three scenarios that we've looked at going forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's good though.
I think it is too.
Thank you.
It's a great final thing that you've given us.
I think it should be very helpful.
Yeah.
As a working document.
Thanks, really.
No, no problem.
It's a little grim.
That's why we're sad you're leaving.
I know.
It's a problem for you.
All right, anything else on that? Or are we on to personnel report?
We have the capital. I, I'm assuming town rights, strategic planning, is that the five-year capital? Or, or was this just kind of a?
That goes under Paul and Lynda, so we'll get to the school committee reports. Yes, there it is. So the personnel report is in your packet. We've appointed our school psychologist. Mr. Horgan's retiring. Amanda Ryan is our new school psychologist. Sarah Smith will be our new nurse at Hopkins Academy. Rosalie Conklin, currently she is an educational support professional at Hadley Elementary School. Ms. Snyder will be retiring September twenty-third, and Ms. Conklin will start the Monday after that. And Ms. Bell has been, has been discussed in previous meetings, and Dr. Wickman was discussed in the last meeting. We actually, I met with our English candidate for Hopkins Academy today, and Amy Lampkin, I'm gonna get the last name wrong. And so we met today and we do have that position now filled. She's somebody who has served as a long-term substitute teacher at Hopkins Academy. She served as the long-term sub for Ms. Pipchinsky for a while and another assignment for us. So she has experience at Hopkins, came highly recommended and is currently working on her PhD in English at University of Massachusetts Amherst. She's writing her dissertation. I don't think we have any other openings right now. I think everything is filled.
Nice job!
For the moment.
All right, Chris, we're back.
Okay. So let's see, we'll start with the expense report. Again, no surprises that I can see at all. You can see at the end, while it's showing two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars remaining to spend, we don't have that much remaining to spend. But this was a couple, this was last week. So, you know, we had another payroll and then another one-day payroll that we'll be processing again. Not, I'm sorry, not one day, four-day payroll because we have to get the payroll for the last, this last week.
Right, right, right.
But not include Friday. So that day will go into next fiscal year's payroll, if you can believe that. Somebody had some time when they wrote these rules. And so, you know, again, we will spend down to zero. What will happen is if we have any remaining money, that will go, I will just transfer some of the expenses, salary expenses that we paid from school choice. I will transfer them back to the local budget for that exact dollar amount. That will increase your school choice balance and zero out the budget.
Are you gonna talk about revolving accounts?
I can do that next, certainly.
What are we gonna do about lunch?
Yeah, that was, as we're closing the year, what are we gonna do about lunch?
Sure. I transferred Diane, the, the food services director's salary from lunch to the local budget.
Okay.
That was a, a swing that should give you about a twenty thousand dollar balance to start.
And take care of this.
And, and take, take care of the deficit that we see. I thought it was just important to, to do that because as you can see, we started last year with nine hundred dollars. Then in August, we were minus already. And, you know, it just, it, it's senseless to start with so little money because obviously we're losing on average about ten thousand dollars a year. So, so we took care of that as well. I, I just did not get the lunch total for May in, in my stuff from the town account. So unfortunately, I did not include it in here, but the June thirtieth balance will be much better. So I know my phone was going off all day today because I was CC'd on every email that was sent out. Diane Zach is trying to collect the funds for negative account balances. So everyone got an email today. And I hope that she can collect some of that. That's about eight hundred and fifty dollars, I think, that's remaining now. So it has come down.
You're CC'd on every one of those?
So, you know, I'm hoping that that'll come down. But it has come down about maybe three hundred and fifty dollars or so from where she was about a week ago. So she's made a lot of progress.
She's doing a great job.
So what's, so you only have two more days with us or so. What's your recommendation going forward for how we can manage this lunch program? Is it to just accept that we should have Diane's salary outside of the?
Unfortunately, I mean, this is not unusual to have a school district losing money in the lunch program. It's, it's the rare district actually that, that does. For some reason, Ware has been able to self-sustain. And since I'm on the school committee there, I can always just ask the food services director there, how do you do it? Because I, I don't know how he pulls that off. But most districts are losing money. And so there's, you know, we can, we can always do. And so there's, you know, we can, we can always do what we've done in the past, which is, as the budget allows, transfer expenses out of lunch, you know, to bring it back up. I see no, you know, definite way of, that we can say, oh, we can just turn this around, you know, I mean...
The only ones that are turning it around are the districts that are qualified for the new program, where everybody gets lunch without paying.
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's, that's certainly one way, yeah.
And as far as just moving the expense permanently into the operating fund, because it's technically supposed to be an enterprise fund, wouldn't we have to keep it set up as an enterprise fund, which means that your revenues are supposed to cover your expenses? And when they don't, you would show revenue as a transfer from the operating budget, but you wouldn't start with an expense outside of the enterprise fund and in operating budget general fund.
Yeah, I prefer to keep it in there and then kind of make up for it at the end of the year, like we've done.
Because then you have this quasi-enterprise fund.
Well, but is it an enterprise fund by law or by choice?
I think it's an enterprise fund by law.
Is it by law?
I mean, not so much by law, but it operates as one. I mean, a fund does not, the law doesn't tell you what the fund is.
Well, no, I know, but I...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know of any district that doesn't have it set up this way.
Why couldn't we be trendsetters? I mean, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think your accounting standards would say that how a fund is supposed to operate, in other words, if you're charging a fee for a service, by definition, there, you really are starting to set something up as enterprise. The only other time you're charging a fee for something or raising revenue isn't a proprietary fund, like a student activity fund, in which case, you can use those funds, we do an athletic revolving, we do when kids raise money to go on a field trip. But when you're charging a fee for a service, and you're not setting it up as a proprietary fund, where you can use it for essentially whatever you want, then you have no choice, I think, but to make it enterprise. Maybe we can check, but when you look at fund definitions, there's only three types, and I don't think there's hybrids.
Yeah, I can look into it, certainly, and, and, you know, let you guys know.
It's not a big deal.
But I have a feeling that's, you know...
If we could just, just trying to think outside the box.
Sure, hey, nothing wrong with that. What else do we have?
Grant allocation.
Grants, okay. And so the grant report, again, circuit breaker is gonna be one of those items that, again, is kind of used as a, as a balancer. But we can, you know, carry money forward, certainly, into the following year. We can't carry as much as is in there right now, but there are more expenses to hit that as well. So, and as you can see, the other grants, the 240 grant, we're probably going to have that, we have until August thirty-first to spend it, and I, I think it's not going to be spent until July, so that will be going forward. The health grant is, is going to be one of those things, I'm going to have to call Renee. Part of it is the, she got a new component of the grant, and it came, I think, at the end of March, and, and we basically had until June thirtieth to use it all up.
Must have come from the Department of Public Health.
And, and so that, you know, that, that was tough, really. It was just hard to, to spend that portion, only because it was restrictive as to what you could spend it on. So you couldn't just go and say, well, we've already spent this much money, we'll just transfer the expense to a, to a grant, you know, it's not that simple. So, you know, I can't really believe that they would do that, of basically say, hey, here's all this money, and by the way, you've got three months to spend it. Because a lot of the money was for training other districts, which meant that the nurses had to go out and do training in other districts, and that's, you just can't say, okay, we're gonna spend the next three months out of the district. You know, that doesn't work either. So it was really very tough, and, you know, I'm sure they did everything they could to use it up, because obviously, you don't ever want to send money back to the state. But I have a feeling that many of the districts that got that grant in March, and it was, it was at the end of March, it wasn't like March first, just, you know, they had no way of being able to do it, so...
So you're gonna ask the state if we can have a no-cost extension on the grant?
I can ask them, and they're, they're pretty easygoing about the grant, but you just don't know, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Capital priorities, I have that as you, even though he handed them out, but...
Well, do I wanna talk about this, or do we want Chris to help us talk about this? The capital planning committee met and went through how to allocate and prioritize our capital plans.
So what, what capital plans now, the town policy is what now? We're not taking these out of operating expenses? We go to the town and look for the money? Or how is it working these days?
Yes. We will be going to the town's capital planning committee with, and presenting our five-year plan. I think the only, the only question I would have is the first two in year one, which are IT systems, that, you know...
Don't look at their early capital.
I wouldn't call them capital, I would've added them to operating, and yet, we were asked by the town, two years in a row, to come to them with a level services budget, and the level services didn't include the computers. Now, we have, as a result, have obsolete computers, so...
But we, we wouldn't necessarily be asking, I mean, the problem is asking the town to borrow for things that become obsolete, so as quickly as technology does. So we wouldn't necessarily be asking them to borrow, we might be asking for the fund, for capital fund, so it would not be unwise financially.
Right.
And looking at that, you know, I think the athletic fields, for year one, at least, will be $400,000.
And it, and it looks like, from what you gave us, is that we're on a two-phase plan, not a three-phase, right?
I think so.
I think so, too.
Yeah. We haven't fully fleshed out that second phase.
Yep.
We're just looking at what's left to be done.
Yeah, so we should, well, we can update that.
Does that eliminate year three, then?
I think it does. I mean, I think... So would we have, I guess I would just need the dollar amounts and the years.
And I would be, the only reason I would be careful, I know, Paul, you were going to, you and Linda are going to talk about the Phase One development, which, as you said, is closer to, it's 405?
Four six?
Four six, thank you, it's four oh six. But that also doesn't include the cost of bid specs, which you said would run roughly eight percent as well. So, that conversation...
So it's more like 450?
So just before you shave too much off of that...
Oh, so maybe we don't, maybe we keep it as is until we have...
Okay. Yeah, that's a good cut. Good, they have a 15% contractor.
That's, what is that, open profit? Right?
So, maybe we keep, maybe we keep the fields as is until we know more.
Yeah.
All right, Robie, you're the only one that hasn't seen this. Do you love this prioritized plan that we came up with? Everybody else in, at this table did it, so it's all you.
I, I, I think it is similar to what I have seen before, the grease traps have been moved out.
It is pretty similar.
Other than that, it looks, I don't see any new additions.
No, it's just changing the order. Robie, remember the last time, they'd asked specifically, so you see the numbers down the side, they asked us to specifically prioritize? And that was the part that, then the school committee asked the, the subcommittee to, say, rank order them, and bring it back to us to think about. So that's the rank order, but you're right, other than that, little has changed in terms of the projects.
So, but this is, your, your priority items are listed as 2016, 2017, so haven't we already passed...
Which is fiscal year, no, that would be fiscal year seventeen.
That's what it says.
Okay.
Starts July first.
But, but in terms of asking the town for capital expense money, that, that window has closed, has it not? Unless you wanted to go to, to Fall Town Meeting? Are we talking about going to Fall Town Meeting for that? Because that closes, what is that, that closes in early August or something?
Well, I think we, our plan was to bring this to the town, at that, at their next capital planning committee.
Okay.
And I wonder if, if we keep the fields at $500,000 for year one, if we just have a year two at that same level? Again, we don't have the full specs, but I can imagine a commensurate level of activity.
I know, it sure seems like it, doesn't it? Unless we are adding a parking lot, which I guess could add something.
But that's a separate line item here, right?
There's resurface Hopkins parking lot.
But didn't, didn't we talk about perhaps adding one, some parking here? I'm sorry, that we would talk, we talked about adding a new parking lot, kind of behind the school?
That's what I mentioned, that we had space if we needed additional parking.
Especially if we're talking about a library.
Right, I think that becomes a new project.
Yes, it does. So you, we don't have the information?
Right. Well, I think this is good for August, for the August town capital meeting.
Do we wanna revise, then, make it $500,000 and take off the third year for fields?
Sure.
So that's assuming, the only reason I'm just asking this question, maybe I'm not following, is, that's assuming total project cost at $1 million, and that makes me nervous, because in FY twelve, it was $1.3 million. That does, that...
You just...
But I wasn't, I know you meant Berkshire Design, so I just wanna remind folks, I'm wondering what, what changed.
Well, we haven't itemized the second phase, but we've talked about what, you know, what needs to be done, and I'm just looking at, it's less paved surface, it's less new creation in the fields, and it's a commensurate amount of geographic area, so I'm hard pressed to see why it would be 50% more cost.
Well, why don't, what we could do, did we already do this, three dots, estimate from 2012?
And I didn't bring the file, but I'm wondering if there are elements in the 2012 estimate that were jettisoning? Like, was there a parking lot addition?
I don't know, we should find that out, I guess.
I think, I think you put that, things back in that were jettisoned, frankly. We jettisoned the irrigation system, that's back in.
It is, yeah, that was one we thought was essential.
I think, I don't know about the walk, the walking paths. I don't, but that's certainly not Phase One, that would be in the second phase.
So there were certain things, if I'd look back, just prices of individual items have gone up or down. Like, the individual quantities have shifted based on design, but more so, some of the actual costs of things have actually gone down. So I wouldn't be surprised if, and I, I mean, I'd go off of these numbers, which are less than a week old, from Berkshire Design.
I think when it was originally envisioned, they, some people think that there are issues with drainage on the existing fields, and I think it really wasn't visioned as tearing everything up, and it may be that, when it comes to, to actually doing it, that they don't actually tear the tire to move earth, you know, everywhere. That may be the difference, but...
Well, our options are to be conservative and keep it as a three-year, $1.3 million project, since we only have Phase One estimates, or say, since Phase One is coming in at 405 plus eight percent, and it seems to be about half the project, then maybe it's come in lower. I don't know. I don't know what the best answer is.
What's the benefit in changing it from what it is?
Well, if somebody asked me what's the third phase, I don't...
Oh, you don't have an answer? Right, 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 yeah, I can see that. You also don't, I mean, you have identified a possible source of funds for the first project, and you have not for the second phase, correct?
We haven't asked about the second phase. We're hoping to show success in the first phase.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we have in our handouts, Paul, Phase One, but you're also looking at something that says Phase Two, I guess we're at that one.
No.
We don't, I don't think, it was sort of like Phase One and then all the rest.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So there isn't anything that really exists, other than the master plan.
That's right, which is years old, and so, I mean, when I did talk to, last week, when I talked to Peter at Berkshire Design, I should say, they've been fabulous, just providing pro bono advice. We did, we talked about it as two phases. The second phase would be the, the, would that be the eastern girls softball, and the western boys baseball. The western boys baseball gets rotated 90 degrees, further uses up the, most of the remaining fields that are now still used to agriculture. And we finished the entire walkway. So those are the two big pieces.
And did he talk about it? That makes sense to me, that he talked about it in two phases. Because this idea of three phases was, I think, came from developing the capital plan and saying, what can we realistically say in terms of raising this kind of revenue?
Right.
So it was a fiscal reason. So the two-phase, that makes sense to me. Was it clear that it was equal? Was that a discussion?
No, that wasn't discussed.
So that's where I would be careful, the price tag, I mean, maybe it did go down significantly. I would, I would just hate to see us in a place where, whose fields was it recently, that they're not done, they ran out of money? I'm trying to think what it was.
Well, that's why we'll break it into phases, and we'll make sure each phase can be funded individually. So I guess that's the question, if we break it into, I think it is two phases. So the question is, how much is the second phase? And that's where I'm just saying, logically, since it seems equal or lesser amount of work, maybe you add in an inflation rate. Is, is there a benefit of overestimating or underestimating?
Well...
Probably probably comes to each.
Kinda go in the middle.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, help me understand, if we were fortunate enough to receive support from CPA, there's also, there's, we'd be looking for other funding sources as well. But if you say, here's, here's our best estimate, and we do have, assume some degree of inflation, and what, it's just so rare that a project comes in under budget, or frankly, on budget. It's just rare, and that has nothing to do with, I don't know, town, the town could look at their projects and see how many of them came in right exactly on budget. And then, if it were less, we wouldn't keep CPA funds. I mean, I can't imagine us having those, any funds be returned, I guess.
Well, I guess, it sounds like maybe you shouldn't take the total cost down, because you just don't have enough information to change the figures from last time. You have informations for the first, first phase, but you really don't have enough information about the second phase to change the total projected cost.
I don't have any specific information, other than an estimate for what I'm perceiving to be more work.
And, and for people who are watching, if there's a question about, well, how come we can't just get that information? I just want to underscore what you've already said. Berkshire Design, the original phase worked, maybe they, maybe there's a cost associated with that in 2012. Did that work? Has met with us on a number of occasions, has created these phases for free.
Right.
To the point of, when people ask, why don't we have exact amounts on our capital plan? Because you can't expect people to come out and price out a job that they have no guarantee of getting.
But they have a high knowledge of the site, given having done the original design, so they're in a good position.
So there's a point at which we can't say, now would you please do also Phase Two in detail, and we'll continue to take that.
Right, because in a, in a year or two, maybe, maybe we'll ask for the money.
So I'm fine with...
Well, what we could do is, we could say that our second priority is Phase One for the Hopkins Academy Athletic Fields at a price of $500,000.
Yeah.
And put that into year one, and then we could say that our, wherever we want Phase Two, in terms of priority, would be Phase Two with a TBD.
That's right.
How about that?
That's very good.
That's a good idea, Linda.
Thanks.
That would be pretty accurate.
Yeah. I guess the question then is, where does Phase Two of the fields go in our priority? Because, because this Phase One is accomplishing a lot. We are adding a multipurpose field slash soccer field, a baseball field, a softball field, and two-thirds of the walking trail. This is a good first phase.
Right.
And so, maybe then Phase Two goes...
Number five, after the girls locker room?
That's what I was gonna say.
I would say, yeah, the gender equity issue came up in that report, so I think that's appropriate.
All right, so let's do that, and say, Phase Two fields with a TBD...
On the price.
On the price, yeah.
That's good. It'd still be in year two?
Definitely not in year two. I think it would have to go into year three, because if...
And that would make sense, just from, I mean, even at the earliest, year three, right?
Yeah, because we have to do the design, we have to find the money, we have to, okay.
And then I just wanna go back to the library and the middle school, so pardon me for being obtuse here, but the middle school softball field, is it gained that thing we're worried about here? Are we getting...
I, I think we're okay. Is... I think we're okay, it's, it's going, we, the thing that I told the library is, we can't lose that field if we don't do this project. So our support of the library going over here, taking up one of our softball fields, means that we are getting support for the Fields project at town meeting. Because that's the only way to, to lose that field.
And perhaps I should know the answer to this, I don't, and certainly I can ask Eric Sudnick, but is it enough to have one field?
You have two softball fields, and you have two, two baseball fields, right now you only have one baseball field.
This one will still be in existence, and we're adding one here. This, this softball field will still exist, we're adding one here, this baseball field will still exist, we're adding one here, and by doing the Phase One, we could sacrifice the softball field over here.
Is it used?
It's not now, because we don't have a middle school team, if we have a middle school team again.
It hasn't been used in quite a while.
Yeah, so, so we're doubling, with Phase One, we're doubling our softball and baseball fields.
No.
Oh, no, we're doubling.
You get your second baseball field.
Second baseball field, and replacing our second softball field.
Essentially, if the library budget goes through, you're increasing by thirty percent.
Right.
Good, thank you.
And I mean, I think you should know, one thing that's, is that idea of creating a new paved walkway, eight foot wide, and I think the Phase One was, creates over twenty-one hundred feet near Middle Street to the school, and so that's.
Save access to school.
I know, isn't that nice?
Now that it doesn't benefit me, but, but fine, thank you.
So what do we need to do with this, is this so close that we could say this is what is going?
I thought so.
I would make a couple edits, just to the narrative there, just, it didn't include the fifteen percent design, so to get it up to five hundred thousand, we should talk about match. Because there is a form to fill out that CPA likes, and I've started it, but they need to know what the other contributions are.
Do we have any sign that will set up? We don't at this point, we've put out dealers, but we don't have matching funds at all.
We do not right now, and, and we need to get, it's, I had hoped to talk to Edwin Matusko to have a sense of how much match, and I haven't reached him. I did talk to Bill Dwyer about the history of the Fields project, so have a sense of what the trustees put in.
Yeah.
Yep, and we could add that to the application.
Oh, yeah, might as well.
Might as well.
If you give me that information, I could add it into that narrative.
Okay.
I think that'd be powerful, and then we've got data now, we've got visuals that we could take to, Berkshire Design offered to make this into a poster board for me, they're wonderful, and we could take that to the trustees and tell them our plan.
Yep, I think we should take it to, yes, we should shop it around.
Okay, and CPA, once you have gotten this to the place where you would like it, the school committee is comfortable, I'll make sure that's in David Nixon's hands in addition to Edwin's hands as soon as it's done. The deadline, I sent out the deadline, I've now forgotten what it is for CPA, they are meeting September, I also sent that date out.
It was August.
Is when it's due, and they're meeting September seventh?
Like seventeenth or something, seventh or seventh.
I feel like it's earlier. And so it would require, then, if, it would be great if you were able, all of the poster boards, to bring it to CPA.
Yeah, I might like to send this with the June.
No, I have, that it's September twelfth, Monday, September twelfth at seven PM.
Not Golden Corral.
I hope it's not at Golden Corral, it's just like.
Golden Corral.
Thank you.
They have the chocolate fountain.
Exactly.
Well, there you go. Hardly be a good chocolate fountain.
So, yeah, I think, so you thought we needed a school committee vote, do we want to wait until the July meeting to have it full, complete, happy, or do we want to say?
What's being presented to CPA.
To CPA, right.
And I don't know that a vote was absolutely necessary, what I, what I didn't want to do was, I did not want to go up and fill out a, us on behalf of the school committee. It doesn't require a vote per se, but I didn't want to fill out something, go there and say, give us all this money on behalf of this school committee, this is really a committee to committee conversation, board to board conversation.
Okay.
So if you're comfortable, however you're comfortable organizing it, then.
Yeah, I'm leaving at the end of next week, et cetera, so I'd like to get this all wrapped up, and by the next couple days, I get to revise narrative, put it all in a package, I can talk to Peter about getting a larger print, and then if there's something, we could schedule to talk to the trustees before.
Yeah, I'll call Bill back and ask about that.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Meet with him, thanks.
All right. Are we done with that, wrapping it up, we're on to CES?
You know, a question though, there are two as a match, if the trustees are matching.
Matching?
No, not matching.
We keep using them, they're, they're additional revenue sources, David said there was no expectation of match.
So would the school be expected to offer additional revenue sources?
I was thinking we should have a community-wide Field Day, and organize a fundraiser that includes like big cornhole tournament and three-legged race, like an old-fashioned Field Day.
That'd be fun.
And try to bring in, have a big fundraiser, the question is how quickly we would need to have that and how quickly we could pull that together.
Do you need to have it in September, you mean?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we could promise that we would have a fundraiser, or if we actually need to have it scheduled.
Well, one way is the school could, could the school commit to a certain amount, and then do fundraising and back it if they don't make it.
I think it would be better if you wanted to schedule a fundraiser and see what you get, instead of promising an amount, we certainly don't have it in budget, so I don't know how we can really promise an amount.
Well, let's, let's talk again in July after we've talked and got more information about what I hope for match contribution would be, and then decide if we think we could pull off a major fundraiser. I think we, I think, I think we would get a lot of community support if we did.
I think so too, yeah, and I know people.
A fun fundraiser.
I know there's some folks who would be interested in helping to arrange that, so.
I have some folks on the list to hit up.
I think there's a value of having this school or town show.
Exactly, I do too.
Yeah, I just, we don't, we don't have a budget that we can say, we're going to give you twenty, we're going to put twenty-five thousand dollars out of our operating budget, because we just don't have it.
Yeah, and I think that goes, that goes back to, where, where does it sit in, in comparison to obsolete computers? So, all right, so let's continue working on this, we'll talk more in July and decide what we're going to do. Anything happening at CES?
We evaluated the executive director, he got a very positive review, and we will make the final vote on the budget this Wednesday. Before we break for the summer.
Line item transfers for FY16 is in the action items, do we have any?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, all right.
And have we done it, except for trying to come up with a approval of the CPA request, we're going to talk more? Approved capital plan priorities, do we need a motion for that?
I think so.
Okay.
I can send you just the adjustments that you made, I can send them tomorrow.
All right, so let's go, let's be, let's look at our calendars.
What about, we never talked about the element that was in here. Did we already talk about this last time, I forget, the Hadley School Committee memo from the Hadley Education Association, Jason Burns?
That was deferred.
That was deferred, because.
They were unable to make it tonight, so I had said that I don't think the school committee wants to take a position without being able to interact directly with the HGA.
So Paul, you're unavailable on July first.
July first?
I'm sorry, July twenty-fifth. Do we know about Humira and Heather, are they currently available on July twenty-fifth?
I don't know, all I know is Humira said that June was horrible for her.
And July, right?
And July, I'm not sure.
I think somebody else might have had a problem in July, I don't recall.
First week of August works for me.
First week of August would only work for me if we'd be willing to move it to Thursday.
I'm sorry, I can't do Thursday that way.
Could do the eighth.
Well, our regular meeting is going to be on the twenty-second.
Right, yeah, that's.
I think we do have to consider that.
All right, Paul, we're going, we're keeping with the twenty-fifth, if we have a quorum, we'll miss you.
I could call in from Munich.
Yeah, I think, I think, given the traveling we have on, for this, that we really should be more amenable to having people Skype in and calling and stuff, because people are just missing too much. You know, if you don't, if you're not here for the meeting, you just miss too much, it's not the same to read the minutes.
Right.
There really isn't, so I think we need to.
Come up with the technology.
Yeah, I mean, we've done it before, so I think that really, we really need to do that.
Yep.
Just know, as we did tonight, so we could, you have to have a fiscal quorum before you can have anybody Skype in.
Yeah, right, right.
All right, we're going to work on that so that we bother you while you're in Munich.
Good plan, I'm sure you'll get it all together by then.
All right, do we have anything else, have we done it all? Wowzers. You're going to send us your ballot documents? Oh, wait, it's our last meeting with Chris.
Oh, Chris, Chris, oh, that's right, that's the other thing we needed to talk to you about with signing.
Yeah, I have it on my note. So, I have to say, I'm, I'm just confused at this point as to, as to how you guys want this handled. I initially sent it out to everyone with everyone as a signer, and the problem is, when we have everyone as a signer, then everyone needs to sign it quickly, because what happens is the town will not release the checks, so sometimes they, in the case of the first one, the check's out there for a month, and, you know, that's not a good thing. Then, a couple weeks into it, I emailed a member and asked, could you please sign it? And was told, oh, I didn't think I was a signer.
Right.
Okay, then the week after that, I was told by our bookkeeper, only have this, this, and this person's as signers, so I did that, then I did it again at the fourth one, and then I was questioned, how come I wasn't a signer? And so, and I'm not, I'm not blaming, but I'm just curious as to what I'm supposed to do.
You don't care, you don't care, just.
I truly do.
Well, to set it up, I mean, if you have three signers, the issue then, and I love it, it's a great system. So if you have three signers and somebody's away, and I didn't have access to email, so I said, asked somebody to sign for me, which is what we used to do, but that seems to be more problematic, if you only have three signers, because then somebody has to go in and change it, and then change it back, is that the issue?
You can't just, you can't set rules and say, oh, if we have three out of five, we're good, you know, it just, it doesn't have that capability. So what it, the only thing it will do, and the only way I can see a document with the signatures, is when every signature is on there that, that I put a signature box in for, then it sends me an email and says, you can now download the doc, download the document, which I do, and then I send it on to Linda at the town hall. So it's, it's just not, I guess, as customizable as would be ideal.
At the COG, we can do that actually, we can have as many people sign electronically as they want to, and people can go in and hard copy sign it, so we actually have two cover pages, one cover page is the electronic signatures, and one cover page is the handwritten signatures, maybe it's a different company?
It could very well be.
But it doesn't work, then, once you get three signatures, it stops.
Right, only if I only put three signature boxes, because how you set it up is you enter everyone's email address, and you designate if they are signers or being CC'd on the email, then after that's all set up, you drag a signature box over for each signer, and then you have to click and assign whose box it is, and so again, you know, if I, those signers have to sign.
I came back from vacation and said, I'm signing again, but it wouldn't let me sign because it had you there.
And I couldn't remember, yes, because I, and I couldn't remember if I was signing for you for two weeks, so I signed twice.
Right, well, it wouldn't let me, so you had to.
Yes.
Right, so, but it probably is still set up for you to sign.
And we can't, and so it can't just be the first three that get there.
No, it has to be a signed person.
Until all of the signature boxes have been signed, and I don't know if that means that, so if you tried to sign in somebody else's signature box, it would not allow it, which is pretty clever, actually, that knows whose email is, is looking at it. But it, it just creates a problem, and that's why I responded to, this is a work in progress, because there are just these issues that pop up that you just never really thought would be an issue, you know?
So, so we should set it up that it's the, well, tell me how hard this is, it's the three signers unless it's a situation where Paul says, I'm going to be in Europe for three weeks, may not have access, so for three weeks, give this responsibility to Linda.
Or is it that the alternate, I'm just, you and your replacement, is it that the alternate has to come in?
Really, is there a replacement, really?
Has to come in and sign a hard copy, if the alternate, because it has to come in, and rather than having, on this end, I'm going to say it, rather than having the business manager have to keep track, I'm going to reassign rules, reassign rules.
That kind of makes sense.
If you go on vacation and somebody else is doing it, you have to come in, because we can hand carry.
Right.
So it's the three signers that we, that we.
Oh, no, but if it doesn't get signed, he doesn't get a thing that it's done.
Oh.
Right?
All right, so we can't combine the hard copy and the.
And are you printing out hard copies anymore, for me?
Well, actually, the one I emailed to you has this, the old-school hand-sign-it page, Mary asked me today, what do I do with this? I said, I don't know, we don't really need it, there's no signatures on it, but it's still, it's just part of the thing she scans and sends to me to, you know, to put in there, so.
So the system will only tell you when there have been at least three?
No, the system will only tell me if there have been all of the signature boxes filled, whether I drag and drop three, four, or five.
Oh.
It's, like I said, it's just one of those things that we kind of learn as you go, that, hmm, can't do that.
So do we now still have assigned signers?
Well, we didn't, because we said, oh, we just thought we could do the first three that sign it, never done, but it doesn't work that way.
Which would be nice.
Yeah, would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, I can certainly, I know I emailed them once, they're very quick with a response, I can certainly ask, but I, my guess is that it would be something that they.
That's a security issue.
Well, they might consider it for a future build, you know, a lot of times, software companies will do that, where they get ideas and say, oh, that's not a bad idea, but I would doubt it's capable now, but I can certainly ask, it's very quick, you know, they just have a support thing, and you send them your message.
So at this point, given that, it does, right, have to be that we have a standard three, but if one of us is going to be unable to sign in a week, we have to tell the business manager.
To change it.
To change it.
Yeah.
Do we have three assigned?
Well, we didn't really, because.
Because we thought we didn't need to, so, so now we need to assign.
I guess the only other thing that just popped in my head is that I get emails as you read it and as you sign it. So I, and I'd have to try it, really, maybe I'll send out a test thing tomorrow to you guys, if you can just watch for it and try to do it quickly back to me, and then once I get three, maybe I can go in, edit the document, just take out the other two signature boxes. But again, I don't know that it'll allow it, but that might be an option as well. Okay, I have three, I'll go in, take the other two out, and we're good to go, so, it might work.
All right. All right, so let's, let's make absolutely no definitive decisions this meeting. So.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Chris, thank you for everything you've done for us, it was transformative to the Hadley Public Schools.
It has been absolutely enjoyable, I have to say, it really has been.
Good, thank you. We're going to miss you, we're going to like, we're going to like have a school committee meeting in your new office someday, just.
It's quite the move, too, I have to say.
Yeah?
Oh, my god, yeah.
It's a step up?
It is, yeah, exactly, it's good, so, like, yeah, it's, it's nice.
Thank you, good luck.